All right, we're live. Hey, everybody. Welcome to the Get Growing Live Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley and we're joined by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Super excited to have you here this week. If you are brand new, or you maybe it's your first time getting on to one of these work sessions. Just a little bit of housekeeping to start. This is a free weekly session that we offer to anyone in Young Living. You don't have to be a Get Oiling member to take advantage of this, although we certainly would love to have you. And if you haven't done so yet, you can hop over to getoiling.com and get started with us today for just a dollar. And start digging into some of these concepts that we teach and applying them with that super low risk way to get started. So today, we're going to be talking about a personal brand, but let's first talk about you guys over in the chat. Come on in and let us know where you're coming in from. We're super excited to have you all here today. And while, actually while we're doing that, while we're waiting for that response, what we'd like to start doing, and we did this last week. I want to kind of keep this up. For those of you who are brand new and want just a little bit of an orientation. I'm going to do a quick screen share show for you and and show you exactly the best ways for you to get started with Get Oiling right now. So here is our website, getoiling.com. If you have not gotten started with us yet, you can get started for a dollar right now by clicking one of these cool little buttons here. But once you've signed up and you go to your dashboard, you will actually, if you're signing up now at this point as we are recording this, or as we're broadcasting live, you're actually getting to take part in an automated training program that lands in your inbox over the course of 30 days called Destined for Diamond. And that's actually something that you get with that dollar trial as well. But what you want to do is come in and click this little setup progress bar. And there will be specific instructions on how you can get started really quickly, along with really short videos to help you understand exactly what the steps are for you to get things rolling, such as getting your your members imported over from the Young Living virtual office, setting up the About Me section on your website and more. So I wanted to show you guys that real quick before we get into our content today. And where's everybody coming in from? Oh, all over the place.
All over the place. Minnesota, North Carolina, Austin, Florida, Calgary. Yeah, Penn, York, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Northern Cali, yeah, California, North Carolina, Colorado, Kansas, all over. Wow.
Awesome. Awesome. So, so yeah, and, and yeah, for you guys getting started, definitely follow the steps in the Destined for Diamond email sequence that's coming to you. If you haven't received it already, you go to, where is it in your account, Greg? Where you can turn that on if you're an existing member and you haven't had access to that training yet?
It's actually under my account. There's my account settings and then there'll be a button if you scroll down for Destined for Diamond. So you can just click a button and you'll be in.
Awesome. Yeah. And that's in-depth, step by step. See, we believe in not just giving you guys the tool to the tools to succeed, but to also give you the context that you need to understand how to use them to be successful. Because nobody comes into this business a total expert at this business. We're all learning as we go and figuring this out. And we want to accelerate that path for you. So that's why obviously Greg built this amazing platform for you to run your business. And then, of course, we have these trainings to help you understand how to better put that to use. So today, we're actually talking about personal branding. This is going to open some of our features on the platform. But if you're brand new, all of this, I think, is going to be really applicable to you as well, even if you're not a member with us yet. So I'm going to go ahead and go over to share my screen and and we're going to get going on our presentation for today. All right. So today, as promised, we are talking about your personal brand. So today, we're going to cover what a personal brand is and why it's important to you as distributor of Young Living. And steps you can take right now to implement smart branding practices. You're also going to learn some of our favorite online resources and tools for branding yourself. Really simple and easy. I promise you do not have to be a graphic designer or marketing whiz to do this. And then how to brand yourself with our super cool new feature. You guys, we've gotten some requests for this and it's really powerful. It's simple and powerful and we're going to show you this at the end of our call today. And then, of course, we will have Q and A as well. If you've come with questions or issues, things that maybe you're stuck with in your business as you're building with Get Oiling, we are here on these calls to take Q and A to the extent that we're able to. So I'm going to get through this quickly and we'll get to our Q and A after. All right. So first, I want to ask you guys a question and Greg, if you can keep the chat up and and let me know what the the answers are here. Among you guys, what would you say personally you feel is the world's most iconic brand? When you think of a brand that is a household name to everyone around the world, what are the names that come to mind for you?
You got Apple, Lysol, Tide, Pepsi, Coke. Very good responses.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, you guys, you guys understand the the concept as well of of the personal brand. I mean, there's the the most perfect example, I think, you know, no matter what your personal or political persuasion may may be. The the most perfect example of an incredibly successful personal brand, I think, in the world right now is the President of the United States. Right? Like that, that's a guy who was known for personal branding before he became president. And I think his personal branding skills kind of made him president. So, so having a personal brand is an incredibly powerful thing, as evidenced by the example I just gave you. So yes, all you guys are right. Apple, Lysol, Coca-Cola, these are brands that we all know. We may love them, we may not, but we certainly know what they are and we know what they stand for. Right? So let me ask you this. So for those of you who have answered, beyond the brand's product, right? So these brands that you guys have just listed off, beyond its product, what thoughts or feelings come to mind when you think about this company or this entity, right? What are the associations that you make with these brands outside of their products? So if you're thinking Apple, what do you think about aside from phones or computers? If you're thinking Lysol, what comes to mind when you think about about that company when you're not just thinking about the spray model or what have you?
Innovation, good products. Wendy says quality. Safe. Jan says, safe, easy to use, quality. Brenda says practically on every corner.
So ubiquity, safety, yeah, ubiquity, safety, quality, lots of things like that. Actually, so Volvo is a a brand that is a household name as well, right? And their cars, but what you think about when you think about Volvo is safety. Right? When you think about Apple, you think about innovation, you think about design. So not to, not to really like just go on and on about this point. But it's really important to understand that a brand isn't just a name that looks the same way everywhere. It's put like literal, you know, brand on the back of cattle, right? Because that's, that's kind of the same thing. You're stamping the brand everywhere. Brands in this way, and in the function of what we're talking about today, they have the ability to transcend what it is that they put in the marketplace and and to influence on a visceral level your reaction to them. And then, of course, you know, from there, whether or not you're going to be loyal to them, whether or not you're going to buy again and so on. So did you guys know that you are already a brand? Just maybe a show of hands, if you already knew that you, you are a brand. If you are on social media, did you know that you're a brand? You guys are smart, ahead of the curve. Love it. I'm seeing all the hands raised here.
Lots of hands.
So the fact is, is that if you're online, you are, right? What your brand is, everyone here today, and what a brand is generally, it's a set of ideas of perceptions or emotions that are maintained by others, by other people than you, that conveys what it means to buy from, work with, or associate with you. Right? It's a, it's an overarching idea. It's a feeling. It's an intangible thing that is attached to who you are and what it means to interact with you, to buy from you and to work with you. And in the age of social media, everyone has a brand. So back in the days when Donald Trump was first building his personal brand, the only people who really had access to building personal brands, namely before the age of social media, the only people who had access to personal branding were celebrities, right? Who, people who had, you know, public officials, people who were in the public eye, who had access to mass media. In today's age, every single one of us has access to the same mass media as everyone else. Anyone can get a YouTube account. Anyone can get an Instagram account. Anyone can become an Instagram influencer. Oh, my God, how many of them are there? And don't they all look the same? It's a, so there's, there's a way for for you to take advantage of these tools and and to really elevate yourself and get the benefit of that recognition and that that additional layer of emotional response in a way that wasn't accessible to people before, who weren't, you know, super wealthy or already famous. And this means that you have that power. So we're going to learn how to put that power to use in your business today. To help you attract and inspire people to take the action that you would like for them to. Take the action toward, you know, making the purchases that will support the wellness of their family. Taking the action toward sharing an idea that can bring them financial freedom. Right? You want to attract those people, inspire them into action, and specifically attract the ones that you want in your circle. Because that's the thing too, when when you think about brands, they kind of have a cult of personality, right? I think that the the best example that comes to mind are the Apple fanboys, right? These are the people who will line up all around the store when an iPhone's, they'll camp out when an iPhone's going to be launched, right? And they have every single new thing that's coming out. You can have fans, I mean, obviously not as obsessive as that. You don't want that. But there, there's, there's a brand of people who would want to follow your message. And if you are putting yourself out there in the right way, you're going to attract those people to you. And and that's, that's an important distinction. We'll talk about that a little bit today as well. Because it is really important that you are attracting more of what you want and not just taking in everything that's, you know, just plain opportunity, because that can backfire. I think maybe show of hands if you know what I'm talking about. A beautiful thing about this industry is that you, you get to pick who you work with, right? You have a job, you don't necessarily get to pick who, you know, works a shift with you or shares a department with you. You get to pick in this business and that's really, really a beautiful part of it. All right. So why is all of this important to you? Why is harnessing the power of personal branding important to you as a distributor? First, people only buy from and join. Talking about business side here, the people who they know, like and trust. Right? They're not just going to go to Young Living Corporate or, you know, their other option would be to go and buy a lesser quality oil from, you know, from some retail outlet, right? But to get started with and take advantage of what Young Living has to offer, they're go through you. And and they, and you have to be someone that they know, like and trust. And you need a lot of know, like and trust to reach Royal Crown Diamond, right? You need lots and lots and lots of people who know you, like you and trust you well enough to get started, start sharing, stay on board, get on ER, tell all the friends about it and duplicate, right? You need a lot of that. And the internet is really the best place to find them. And there's a number of different ways that you can do that, whether that's, you know, using the internet to get in touch with more people face to face in your community, or just straight up going global with your strategy. Best place to find a lot of people quickly is on the web, because it's where everyone is, no matter where they are. It's in their pocket, it's in their face, no matter where they go. And what this means is that you need to stand out. It's a lot of noise, a lot of flashy distracty things. You need to be standing tall in what you stand for, like a beacon to those who are looking for what you have to say, for what you have to share and for what you can do to help them improve their lives. So your brand helps you stand out because you are unique, you are different, you are special, and you are uniquely qualified to speak to people who are looking for your message and they're out there. And when you identify your brand and you put yourself out there effectively, those people will find you. All right. So your brand also conveys what you're about to the world. This is really important. You know, people, again, that know, like and trust thing, okay, they may be your neighbor, your sister, your cousin, or or maybe a second connection off from one of those people who could, you know, be a new person in your social network. When you are putting yourself out there effectively, people are going to get an immediate sense of who you are and whether you're someone that they want to hear more from, right? And when you're effective in this, you're going to have a lot more people who are interested in hearing more of what you have to say and maybe interested in showing up to one of your classes, interested in opting into one of your online campaigns where they can learn more about you and dig a little deeper and learn more about what you have to offer them. Of course, this also helps you to gain a following. It's more or less what I was just saying there. And then importantly, to filter that following, because you want people who are ready to take action, right? Like when, when you're thinking about building a following online, you don't want to just attract everyone, right? You want to attract people who are of a certain mind frame, right? Who are a certain mindset. People who are looking for a solution to a problem, the people who are not going to waste your time, right? You want to spend your time with people who are qualified and having your branding in place really helps to do that as well. So like we've mentioned, you already have a brand if you're anywhere online. And so this means that on your social platforms, you have a brand, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Pinterest, Twitter, YouTube, wherever you are. You have a brand. It's already out there. It might not be tailored. It might not be strategic yet, but you have one. And of course, your website, especially if you've got one with us at Get Oiling, we've got a lot of personal branding friendly features in ways that you don't necessarily find elsewhere without having to go into, you know, hiring developers and stuff like that. You can do that really easily with us. And then with printed materials as well, if you use flyers, your branding should be there as well. It's not already. And then, of course, wherever you are, because ultimately, your brand is that embodiment of of who you are and how you present yourself. So I want to talk to you guys about the pillars of personal branding, just to kind of take this ethereal thing and break it down into something simple. There's really two main things that we're looking at here that that sort of serve to create and sustain your brand, aside from just your existence, right? Because you being there is definitely you representing yourself and that does create branding to some degree. But to attack this strategically, there's two things we want to look at. First is consistency, right? This is showing up consistency consistently in specific places. So this is being on Facebook every day. This is being in a blog once a week. This is appearing on a podcast once a month. This is, you know, creating a newsletter and sending it out once a month. It's, it's, it's showing up so that people expect you, right? Building that expectation, that wrecking, that that recognition, or that's, I'm, that's not a word, that recognizability. So people know who you are and they see you. And and the foundation of this is your message first. You've got to know what you're about and you've got to be consistent in what it is that you're saying and sharing. You also want to make sure that you've got consistency in your visual messaging, right? So this would be things like logos, fonts, colors and sort of aesthetic themes, and we'll get into that as well. And then you've got congruency. So you're showing up all the time. So there's a lot of you that's visible. That's the first step. And then all of those things are congruent to one another. They're related to each other. To give you an example, if you are all about personal development and positivity and uplifting, and that's a part of your core personal brand, would it make sense for you to post something really, you know, foul-mouthed and nasty or polarized on your social media? You know, maybe you're venting, maybe you're having an off day, but is it congruent with your brand of uplifting and positivity to have something like that? That's what I mean by congruency. And congruency conveys reliability as well, because people can expect for you to continually show up with the same message. If somebody is going to opt in to a newsletter from you, hoping to hear more about holistic homesteading, and then you, you know, come in out of nowhere with, gosh, I don't know, a political rant that's not related to personal freedoms on the homestead. People are going to be like, whoa, I didn't ask for that. That's not congruent, right? So congruency is a really important pillar of a personal brand, because you want to build first that consistency of expectation of who you are. And then that promise that I'm always going to be who I am and and deliver that to the people that follow me, right? Okay, so that's congruency and message, like I was just mentioning. And then, of course, visual congruency as well. So this is keeping things similar throughout everything that you do. So if your personal aesthetic is something that's a little more streamlined, then you're going to want to have that echo throughout the ways that you conduct yourself, the types of images you share and so on. We'll get into this a little bit more. All right. And then, of course, associations too. This is important. Not, not in the minutia level where we're talking about social connections to other people. But when you think about, well, let's, let's just, we'll use Young Living as an example. Young Living has specific, as a brand, they have qualities that that they uphold. They have values that they share. And obviously, if you're here today, you have congruent values with Young Living's, right? So that's, that's an association that has congruency. So you want to make sure that you maintain that kind of thing as you move forward. Because you want to always make sense to people that you would want to follow you. So breaking down consistency a little further with message, first, are what are the values that you stand firm on? Embodied those in the things that you have to say, in the blog posts that you make, in the the things that you write, the images you share, the posts that you make online. Be clear about what it is that you're about and become known for that thing or that set of things, right? You want to become sought after for what it is that you're about. So if you are about empowering people to, you know, to go boldly into their retirement years without having to worry about their finances, then be that expert, right? And embody that. Talk about how what you're doing has helped you alleviate your situation that maybe you had before, and you're speaking directly to others who had been in your shoes previously. Be that person. Be consistently that person. Speak directly to those people. And that's just one example. Everybody's got their angle. You stand for yours. And then, of course, you want to regularly produce relevant content that's along those lines, right? So this is blogging, this is creating videos, or however it is that you are interacting. This could also be, if you, if you're using Instagram, this could mean posting regularly on Instagram as well. Content can be on any of these platforms, so long as you are putting up valuable information congruent with your brand on a consistent basis, then you're doing it right. So this could be blogging once a week, emailing twice a week, you know, Facebook posting once a day, whatever that might be. And then for visual consistency, as an example, pick a font or a couple of fonts and a set of colors that you really like. Now, don't fret too much over this. It doesn't have to be the end-all. Rebranding is a thing that happens. But pick a couple, a couple of colors and use them everywhere. Use them in your emails, use them in your logos, use them on your website, use them everywhere. So the idea here is for you to consistently appear in similar fashion. So all of your images have a logo or all of your, all of your emails come with a, you know, a specific type of image on the top that has a similar color theme, maybe with a logo, maybe with your picture and so on. So use those fonts, those images, those colors consistently in everything that you do, because that is going to create a visual recognition that people are going to be able to respond to. All right. And then, oh, here's an example, right? So we're not a personal brand, of course, even though it's really just a couple of us behind this operation. But I'll, I'll give you guys an example, just because this is something that you all have seen and that you've interacted with. So here's our message, right? Or here's, you know, sort of a summation of our message. Growing a business that duplicates requires more than just a set of tools and a website. We're committed to providing the most complete solution that delivers real results to Young Living distributors. All right. So you guys knew that already. All right. So the action that we take consistently is to provide regular content in the form of free, free weekly training to help distributors grow themselves to reach their goals. That's where we're hitting on consistency, right? Obviously, we're consistently delivering with our product, but we're talking about getting eyes out, getting new eyes onto what we're doing. Just like you need to get new eyes onto you so that you can get new eyes onto Young Living and then, of course, into your business, right? So what we're doing to show people that we can help them get duplication in their business, truly grow their business, is that we provide consistently content in the form of training to help people grow. Okay? And visually, here's what that looks like. So what you'll notice here is that we use two to three fonts consistently, period, on our website, on these, on these slides that you're seeing here. Right now, we're obviously on the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. You see that same font, same colors, that's everywhere. It's on our website, it's on the landing page, it's on the emails, it's on the YouTube thumbnail. You've seen that before and it's instantly recognizable to you, right? Destined for Diamond, those of you who are a part of this, you see this banner in your email for 30 days, right? Our Rank Accelerator Workshop, this is a promo that we are actually running on on Facebook. And I think we've recently put it up to YouTube as well. You've got this branding that's consistent throughout. You see our logo, which is very simple. It's a word with a little drop next to it. And then, of course, we've got that same teal color that we use throughout all of our branding. So there's your example. And you can use stuff like this to, you know, again, for for YouTube videos, for emails, for newsletters, for your website, you name it. That's our visual. Logos on everything and we use the same, basically two fonts everywhere. And those dedicated branded images for content series. All right. So in terms of congruency, what we're doing, first with the message, is, well, I'm sorry, just getting to congruency. I'm not giving us, giving an example of us, because I think you guys understand what that means and how it applies to us. Because what we're putting out there, just to give an example, like, we're not going on our Facebook fan page and talking about the weather or politics, right? We're, we're specifically staying on message and talking about what it is that'll help you, the Young Living distributor, in keeping with our message. Okay. So in terms of how you can look at congruency, first is you want to make sure that you're clear about what you're about and then stay on point with it, right? And then think big before you make a post, right? Before you share something, ask yourself, the brand that I want to become, right? The, the me that becomes RCD, would that me say or share this? That's a congruency question to keep in your mind as you're conducting yourself and just on a day-to-day basis, not high-level strategy, just literal, like, is this in keeping with my brand? Ask yourself that before you hit post, before you broadcast, before you create something, just to to kind of center and make sure that you are coming, coming out in the way that you would really want to. And then, of course, you want to create regularly congruent content with your message, being clear on who this is that you're talking to and how you want to impact them and consistently staying on that message. And then with your visual congruency, you want to ask yourself questions like, are you, you know, are you polished? You know, are you a put-together personality? Then you want to make sure that the images that you're using or the way that you, you know, the way that you put stuff together visually to to put out into the world, keep that kind of nice and tied up. Make it glamorous if you're a glamorous person. Are you a little rough around the edges? Keep it consistent, whatever it is. Just make sure that you keep the congruency throughout. I don't know that there's really a better way to explain this without actually going and like breaking down, you know, an incongruent example, which, to be fair, we're talking about big brands today and we're not really working one-on-one with personal brands. But I think you guys understand what I mean. If you, if anyone has any questions about this, then definitely drop us one so I can help to clarify what that means, visual congruency. But ultimately, what it means is maintaining color schemes, the fonts, and just generally the aesthetic style that's yours. So don't be this way one day and then another day, you know, something completely different. Because what you're ultimately hoping to do is over time to build an idea in people's minds that you represent something, a specific thing to them, right? And you need to decide what that is and consistently work toward delivering that so that they maintain that idea and perception in their mind of you. All right. So here's some things that you can start doing right now to get more out of your own personal brand. The first would be to create a really simple logo. And you could hire someone to do this, but you don't have to. There's actually some really simple tools that you can use that we will recommend that that you can actually do this with right away. It could be your name. Your personal brand is your name. It could be your name. Your personal brand is your name, right? But if you have a business name, then you could certainly use that as well. Now, you want to use that logo on your social images or on the content images, if you're going to have like a blog photo, or if you're going to promote something on Instagram, you're going to put, put something there. Put your logo everywhere, so that there is that recognition of who you are, that's that consistency throughout your presence online. Pick that one to two fonts that we talked about and the colors that you want to focus on in your branding. And, and then also have a photo shoot. This is the fun part. You know, cell phone cameras are so good these days. You can actually go out with a couple of friends, get yourself dressed up however you'd like to, and take some pictures of each other, and then maybe send those off to somebody to get doctored up. Or hit up a photographer and go all out with it. Get some nice pictures taken of you, so that you can use those online as well, so you could put your best foot forward. You can also create simple image headers for newsletters, like the ones that I showed you, and, and for campaigns as well. When I gave you that Get Oiling example of a couple of our campaigns, those were really easy to make, and do you know why? I made them. And, and I'm not a graphic designer or techie. And, and then, of course, you can use thumbnail images for videos as well. So if you're going to create YouTube videos using a thumbnail image, so like if you were to go to youtube.com/getoiling, you could actually see that there is, for the Weekly Work Session, consistent branding throughout. Each week, it's the same image, same font, same colors, and we just change what the, the title or the topic of our talk is when we upload that. So that's something that you guys can do as well, really easy to do. And then, of course, committing to congruent content. So, you know, say that you are really committed to empowering women. Then you're going to write about something that's empowering to women or make a post about empowering women on a very consistent basis. Make a commitment to doing that, so that you become known by the actions that you've taken and the way that you have put yourself out in front of the world. Now, I want to talk really quickly about some of our favorite visual branding tools. First, my personal favorite, guys, if I'm going to do something myself, is Keynote or PowerPoint. Because it's not hard to use, you don't have to be techie with it. All I basically do is take a stock photo or some other image that's, you know, free or licensed off of the internet. I plug it into a slide, layer the text that I want to over the top of it in exactly the way that I want to, pull and paste and whatever, just like you'd be putting together a PowerPoint presentation, and then export it as a JPEG file. So now it's an image. Oh, and by the way, before you even start on that, if you were to follow the example that I just gave you, you can actually change the size and the dimension of the slide, so that it's exactly the size that you needed to be. So YouTube will tell you that your, your image size for a thumbnail needs to be this, you know, this by this. Put that in, right? And then plug in your image, add your text, export it as a picture file, and you're good to go. And, and a really cool thing, and, and I think this is probably why I love using this particularly personally, is because I can just keep this file, this PowerPoint file, with, with all of the different branding assets that I need for a campaign or for a particular series. So say it's a header image for, you know, for a newsletter or a campaign, and a YouTube image, and then maybe another image or two that we would use on a landing page. All of those are inside of one file, and if I need to tweak one for a new piece of content, I just go right there and I do it, and there's a brand new one, and all of the design is already done. Really simple, really easy, and you don't have to buy new software for it. All right. There's also What You See Is What You Get kind of editors, like Canva, which is really popular. I know with a lot of folks. Wordslag is a phone app that's really fantastic as well. Lucid Press is another. There's free and paid versions of all this stuff. And then a little more advanced Pixlr Editor, which is free and web-based and Photoshop. And now, your Get Oiling website. That's another key personal branding tool. Obviously, there are ways to really dig in and personally brand your site using custom pages and custom site menus. We definitely have some training on that that you guys can find in the 90 Day Challenge, and there's definitely more on that to come as well in future sessions such as this one, and also exclusive training that is coming up in the future. More on that in a couple of weeks. But now, I want to show you guys. Greg here has a brand-new feature where you can actually brand yourself inside of Get Oiling with your own custom fonts. So Greg, if you want to take it away, let's see how we can work this magic.
Absolutely. All right, can you see here?
Yes.
There it is. So your editors, all the editors throughout the system now have a number of fonts. There's a new little font family dropdown. This works pretty much anywhere. You'll see the same editor throughout Get Oiling. It works pretty much everywhere. There's some little notes I'll, I'll mention later. But yeah, so there's a font family in here, and we've loaded it up with, I think it's around 15 fonts. It's kind of a variety across different font families from, for those of you that are kind of font geeks like me, you know, from serif to sans serif to script to cursive, you know. So there's a, a variety of different ones here. And I just, you know, for this example, all I did was type something up, type the word fonts, select it, made it bigger. Another minor change is there's actually a lot more font sizes now available. These only used to go in like common increments. So basically, you know, anywhere from 6 point up to 128 now, and you can go much more finer-grained if you need. Because these script fonts tend to be like a little bit tinier for some reason, anyway. So there's a, yeah, I'll just pump this up a little bit here, and then all I did was like, pick a different font, let's make this one here, and then maybe a different color for some fun. And there you go. So, yeah, it's, it's really cool. You can, you can get that basically anywhere. So yeah, so this, this just happens to be a blog post. I happen to be, I clicked on Write in the Blog Post. And if I would save that, which I probably could here, save it and, and publish it on, this is a test account. I can go ahead and like view the post, and I should see my fonts on there now, you know, exactly as the post was, which was super cool. Now, this applies to pages, it applies to landing pages, events, working on some things in the future, maybe for, you know, additional under my site. There's a, it also applies to email, but there's a note here. So like with email, not all email programs will show the fonts. So Gmail is one big one that's like, you know, predominant email provider that does not provide support for web fonts. The colors will come through, and it'll sort of be a similar font family. It's still like, this one is considered a serif font. So you'd probably see like Times Roman in Gmail. Then this one is a script font. So you'd probably see some cursive-looking thing. This is sans serif, so you'd see that. But aside from that, like, there's a lot of other programs that do support it. You know, if you have your own, I think, I, I don't know the full list offhand, but like, I think Outlook was one of them that did. And I've got, I've got a program on my Mac called Postbox that supports them. So anyway, if you do send these through email, just be aware that the person will get, you know, not everyone is going to see exactly what you're thinking. Like, in an email, you may be better off using a tool like PowerPoint, you know, creating an image and putting that in there, instead of using this font, especially if it's a headline. Just see you've got that consistent branding. Just something to note. You know, it's quick and easy, and people will see something kind of like what you have, but it's not exactly. But yeah, we're super excited about this. This has been a, a very long requested feature for people to have more than one font previously. Just, you know, in case you're curious, the font that has been default in Get Oiling is this Latto. If that, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it, but that's the one, like, if you want to use the default font, that's the one that is there right now. So yeah, it's super exciting throughout, basically throughout the system. You can go ahead and add your custom fonts now.
Yeah, and, and actually Cheryl was mentioning a specific font. So if you already have a font that's selected that you're using for your brand, how might you go about putting that to use with Get Oiling?
It depends. If it's a free one, if it's like Google Fonts, says they've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of fonts, and we didn't put them all in there, because it would just be kind of overwhelming. But, you know, if you have a font request, certainly you can email it in. Support at getoiling.com. We'll, we'll check it out if it's a free font. If you happen to have a custom font that you've purchased from somewhere, we can also incorporate that. That's something you'd have to work back and forth with us, but we can actually add custom fonts to this list for you that's specifically for your brand. And again, you know, the, basically all the same rules apply. It, it sort of works in email, and it works everywhere else. So, but yeah, you can, I'm not sure if that specific font she mentioned is a, a free or a custom one, but we can connect after this.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, definitely get in touch with us, and we'll see if that's something that can be supported. So if you were to Google Google Fonts, maybe people can get like a list and see examples of the ones that are out there if they were maybe hoping to, you know, get something more custom?
Yeah, actually, I can, I'll put in a link here. There's hundreds of them, absolutely, many of them. Unfortunately, we can't put them all in there. I think that would probably be a little too much for people, but we can, we could certainly accommodate some, excuse me, some requests.
Yeah, and I think, again, just to start, if you're just, that's fonts.google.com. For those of you who are watching the recording, you can go and check that out as well. But I, I would just say, if you're just venturing into personal branding for the first time, pick one or two of the fonts, and there's many of them here that you like, and pick a couple of colors that you like, and just go from there. You know, start playing around with how you can make that work. I definitely recommend just, you know, starting with something. You could always do a revamp later if you want to. Ah ha, Cheryl says, just checked, it is a free font in Google Fonts, so you may just get your wish.
Yeah, there, there's a font that's in the list that's pretty similar, this, either this Nana, I think it's Nana one, however, I don't know how you say that, but that one looks pretty similar to Laura, but I'll check it out.
Awesome. And so if you want to use this custom font feature, obviously, we've got a blog post as an example here, but this would also be applicable where else on, on your Get Oiling site, would you be able to use this?
Yeah, so I'll show you here. You can use that in landing pages. I'll come in here, I can show you. Create a new one here. Grab one of these, maybe, and... So if you want to change this headline font, highlight it, and there's the font family, and you can go ahead and make it something else, you know, change the color. So yeah, it completely gives it a totally different look. It's, it's pretty awesome. That's just landing pages. Events are another place, just kind of going down the menu here. So create a new event. And again, the font selector is in here, so I can... And welcome, whatever, you know, you can, you can do that. Sometimes these fonts look better at bigger sizes. A lot of these are headline fonts, not necessarily body text fonts, so you want to keep that in mind. You probably don't want to use maybe, you know, this, like this one, this Euphoria Script at a super tiny font, you know, the default is around 14 or something. It's almost illegible. So you want to keep that in mind as you play around with fonts to maintain the readability too. The other, the other places are under my story. That's another section that you can drop in the fonts. So like, if you, if you want to do something a little bit different, you can, let's say we want to go this way. But yeah, that, that's another place. And your page builder as well. For those of you who are basic or higher, under Custom Pages, you can create a page, and again, you can, I believe, change these headlines or, or, you know, any, any part of it, actually, the font selector is there. So, you know, you can completely transform the look of your page too, using the word that's on the screen. So yeah, I think, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Those are, I think, kind of the major areas.
Wendy was asking if we can change title fonts and colors, like blog post titles.
Not at the moment. That's something that I'm looking at adding. It's kind of a follow-up to this as well.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Great. That's so exciting. Yeah, so you can, in almost every single aspect that, that your prospects or your, your members are going to interact with on your Get Oiling site, you can create that congruency, excuse me, words today, across the board with colors and fonts and images. And then where congruency is concerned as well, Jan asked a good question, as she tends to. She says, "Congruency for chameleons, from city glamour to farming, to riding horses, painting, construction. How do you bring that into the congruency of your lifestyle posts for others to get to know you?" It's a really good question. And, and you know, you would think with that range there, that it would be challenging to convey. But the fact is, it's really not. Oh, what's the best way to, okay, so just to give you guys a little bit of preface, a little bit of background. I have taught a personal branding course since 2014 to thousands of distributors across the industry. And it's a really fun exercise. Whisper a secret, there's going to be an opportunity for you guys to take part in this at some point in the very near future, and we'll let you know as soon as that's a thing. A live version, because I know some of you have actually been through, we, we do some coaching, and some of you guys have been through a little bit of that with us already. But to get back to the point here, the important thing for you to remember when you're thinking about branding yourself is to be yourself, right? There's a lot that we can dive into. There's obviously a lot of thought and reflection that should go into sort of curating the way that you want to share yourself. But at its core, the function of a personal brand is to obviously elevate the qualities that you want to share. But if what you want to share is that you are a chameleon and that you are all of those things, then share your life in those ways, right? There's nothing incongruent with city glamour and getting dirty in the country, like, why not have it all? Like, that, that kind of gives the message, like, well, I have it all, and so can you, right? And wouldn't you want people to get that message, who might be hopeful for change in their lives, that you might be able to help facilitate with them, starting with their wellness and then on to financial wellness, right? We clean up good. That is a bridge to the products, Jan. I love it, I love it. So, so we have, that's hilarious.
Lucy actually had another question here, if you, it's up a little ways, but she says, "The $400,000 question, do you recommend branding your personal name or a business catchy name? I have battled that for years."
So, that's, that's a good question. It depends on what your end game is, right? If you have a pre-existing business, right, or, or a business that is, that works in tandem or is complementary to Young Living distributorship, then there may be an opportunity to brand that and, and sort of have that be an umbrella. But I think that the most valuable brand that you can build is your name. Fundamentally, it's, it's the most valuable name, the brand that you can build. Because the fact is, is you don't want to confuse people with lots and lots of layers of brands and stuff, right? Because you, your personal brand, you are going to be the one that's introducing them to the brand Young Living. You're going to endorse the brand Young Living. So now, when you add in another layer of a catchy brand name that you're going to function as for your business, that then refers people to Get, to, to Young Living, that can start to create some rifts in terms of the way people connect, how things flow together. So you, the individual, you, the set of values, you, the brand that puts out and shares valuable information that they have developed trust in, it's, it's going to be you typically before it's a catchy brand name. And, and sometimes, I, I typically advise against it, honestly, unless you already have a business that has products or that has services that are specific and related to that. So if you have, you know, so if you have a related wellness practice, you can keep its name, right? But your name, your brand is the one that's going to be recommending Young Living to people. $400,000 question. It's, it's a pricey question. Awesome. So, okay, so I had a couple of slides just for us to run through, but if you guys have questions, if you, actually, I'm going to go ahead and take our hands down here. If you have questions about building your business, if it's related to brands, obviously, we'd like to answer those. But if you've got stuff that's unrelated, that you would like some answers to in this last 10 minutes that we have here of our time today, go ahead and submit them through the Q&amp;A button at the bottom of your screen, or raise your hand if you would like for us to work with you live on something. And of course, tell us in the comments exactly what it is that you might want that help with. And we will do that. But for now, I'm going to get back to this presentation. All right, so we got our new feature, super cool, Brand Yourself with Your Font. All right. For those of you who have not seen it yet, you did see a glimpse of it at the beginning of our video today. We did just recently do a revamp and... We did just recently do a revamp and really honing in our message, speaking directly to you, the person with the dream to grow your Young Living business and reach those heights that you seek. Get over to the new GetOiling.com if you are not with us already. And you can get access to Destined for Diamond, a 30-day training series where we will take you step by step through the process. It'll get you on the fast track to massive success. And you'll have powerful lessons in depth, targeted lessons in your inbox. Almost every single day, we do give you some breathers there for implementation. And you'll learn how to set up and maximize your GetOiling system, discover better and more effective time management, be more impactful in your business and become the leader that you're destined to be. And you can get started with that today for $1. All right. So let's get into our Q and A. Do we have any, any brave souls that want to share their screen and work through anything with us? Or do we have any, any questions that have come up, Greg?
We have one question here. I haven't joined and I'm wondering, is this all pretty easy to start and set up a site and get moving? My mind is swirling. I suppose as the tech guy, I probably shouldn't answer that question.
All right. Well, how about this? The, I will screen share. Uh, I'm going to go back. I'm going to show you really quick. Because we actually have a, a sample account. There we go, Safari. All right. So you can see that I'm on the GetOiling.com website right now, right?
Yep.
All right, cool. I'm going to bring this in a bit. So the font's probably easier to see. I have a very, very large computer screen, you guys. Okay. So when you get started, you go to your dashboard. And this is for you guys, if you're, if you're brand new or if you haven't gotten started with us yet. You'll actually walk through when you first get started. And that Destined for Diamond bit that I just told you about is going to explain all of this to you as well. But your Digital Upland Coach is a great place to get started. And here's what this looks like. Because what this coach does, just for those of you who don't know, your Digital Upland Coach will actually help you develop habits and, and develop profitable habits to help you grow your business, proven ways, right? So let's just say that you have five hours a week. Maybe you've got a full-time job. You've just gotten started. You're tipping your toes in the water, right? You're new to the business. Or you're just working to develop that hobby income, maybe start paying a, you know, a utility bill or a phone bill, what have you, with income from, from this business. And you're just starting to grow your team. Great. So you select this here and you select five hours, or if you've got more hours to dedicate, then you select that. You hit save and continue. Then you get to pick one of your coaches. Pick whichever one you like. They're all going to motivate you to take the same kind of action. They're just going to have different or varying degrees of a sense of humor or directness that will, it will appear to you in your back office when you're signed in. It will also pop into your inbox with reminders to take action or, or encouragement when you are. And then of course, high fives when you're crushing it. All right. So I'm going to pick Uni, my favorite. And I think, I think everyone's favorite, honestly. It's the majority favorite. All right. So where this brings us is to our coaching dashboard. Now, you've got lots of different opportunities to get started here with activities. And these actually just all relate to business building activities, right? So text a prospect to invite them to a presentation. Say you did it. If you did it, you can enter the contact here and then you give yourself points, right? And then you start to actually see that you can measure and track your progress with the actions that you're taking. Now that's with just generally getting started and, and just going through the motions of building your business as you are already doing it, right? Because when you come to us for the first time, maybe you have a website already and, and, and you want to come to us and have one here. No matter what your tech or online situation is, you already know that in your business, you're responsible for sharing Young Living with as many people as possible so as to be able to get people to ditch and switch and improve their lives with this great range of products, right? These are things that you already know how to do to the degree that you do. And the Digital Upland Coach is a way for you to improve on what you already have going. See, when you're embarking on something that's brand new, it's really important to not overwhelm yourself with a whole lot of stuff that you don't know. Keep doing the things that you know work and that you know how to do. So I recommend that you start with the Digital Upland Coach, making sure that you're keeping that contact with people. Now, when you're ready and you want to move over to sharing your website and you want to, you know, start broadening the scope here, you go over and you choose your story and photo, upload an image of yourself, write a little bit about yourself, save your changes. Of course, when you get started, you're already putting your Young Living distributor number in. And so what happens is, is once you've got all of this set up, you can just hit share my site or view my site rather, this button right here. If you want to share my site, you can actually grab a link. All right. So now we have a, and this is actually a landing page that's, that's here. So she is a food connoisseur living in Jamaica and she's going to share her Jamaican recipes with you. You can actually go out and do this right away. And actually, the way that we did that, because typically it doesn't show up this way. When you go to customize my site, you can choose to have a landing page or no landing page. So I'm going to save this and I'm going to show you what this is going to look like for you as, as a default. Already ready to share. They can learn more. Everything clicks off directly. So here's information about you and your picture. There's a video here. Young Living's video about oils, right? There's more videos here. So you don't have to upload them. We talk about supporting the body with different things. Here we go, Frankincense Essential Oil. And here's the cool thing. What happens when you sign up is you have put your Young Living, your Young Living ID in. And what'll happen is, and this isn't the case right here, because this is a sample account. When you hit add to cart from the Young Living website, when they have clicked off of your website here, you can, you can start sharing this right away. When they go to checkout, it'll have your sponsor ID, enroller ID right here. So if you were to come to us right now and get started, I would say, turn on your Digital Upland Coach and continue sharing in the same way that you have been so far. Get your basic website set up for sharing, which is just very, very simple. And you get those steps to get started immediately. That first Destined for Diamond training is going to land in your inbox right after you sign up. And it's going to show you exactly what to do to start sharing right away. So that's a little bit of a long answer to that question, but I hope that that helps you very much. Do we have any other questions?
We do. Sandy here says, can you confirm the text-in process to our phone number in GetOiling? Do texts always require the landing page or can you also text directly to get a blog page? With the text-in access, you actually set that up on a campaign. And then whatever you put in the reply, whether it's a link or just a text or maybe a picture or whatever, that's, you can send them wherever you want to. So if you want to have a text and keyword set up, set up a campaign, pick your keyword and I'll check and show you here in a second. And then you can direct them wherever you want to. Just send them a link to a landing page or maybe it's the link to a blog page, probably a blog, because I guess if, I don't know, maybe send them to a landing page. Maybe there's some scenario that you would want that in, but.
Not typically though, because I mean, they've, they've opted in when they've texted you, right? So you don't necessarily have to do it again.
Right, exactly. Please give me your phone number again. I just did that. So what I'll do here is switch to an account, I believe, that has the two-way texting, so I can show you that. And the, the text-in keyword is available for the two-way texting, or sorry, the, the text-in keyword is available only on the two-way texting plan. So let me share out my screen here.
Oh, by the way, thank you guys so much for all the love and the comments over here that I'm seeing now. You're, you're all, our members are asking, are answering the question of whether or not we're easy to get started with.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It's awesome. We love you guys.
Yes, that's awesome. Okay. So the text-in, that's under, campaigns are under context settings. And then campaigns right here at the top. And, or I guess this is at the bottom of my screen. I'll just create a new one here so I can show you that right away. And there, if you have the two-way texting feature, which if you don't, you can set up by clicking chat up here. That gets you a phone number, yeah, as well as the ability to text in. But then here's your texting keyword. Once you set up your campaign, you could just choose whatever keyword. Oils is, you know, I don't know if that's too, too generic or not. You don't want something that's super generic, but that someone might just accidentally type in like yes. So, but set that up. I'll just, my new campaign, probably have about 10 of those. And send text here. I'll create it. And then what, right here is where I can write a new message and I'll go ahead and write one. And I'll just say whatever it might be, like here's what you were looking for and then maybe put a link in there. So that's kind of the gist of it. So hopefully Sandy, that answered your question. If not, let me know. I see we have a guest appearance here.
Yes, we do. He gets so needy. It's just like, I don't know, mom's working from home if, and dads too. When you get on the phone, do the kids just automatically show up like ready to bug you and they need something from you immediately? Wally does that when I'm on webinars. This is, this is Wally and he wants snuggle time when it's webinar time. All right. Um, yeah, this is, this is Wally. He's, he's a teddy bear and he, he needs a haircut. All right. So any, any other questions? Oh, there's a couple in the Q and A. Did we get to those already? Okay, yes.
Uh, I think that was Sandy. Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah. So you can, you can text off a link to wherever, whatever you want from those campaigns for sure. You don't need, people don't like get onto a text campaign from a landing page typically. I mean, they, they could if you have an email and text campaign and, and they put in their, their phone number on a landing page. A miniature of my golden doodle. He is like that. Now every, every time I'm out in the city and I see a fluffy dog, I'm like, oh, it's a big Wally or it's a little Wally. This is, this is my first fluff. I, I'm used to having dachshunds. All right. So any other questions, you guys, before we wrap up? Just so you guys know, you know, just again, this is free to everybody. If you're not with us yet, obviously you can go over to GetOiling.com and get started with us for a dollar. Join our community and have our help here every week on Thursdays. You can also reach out and this is invitation to all of you here. If there is something that you're working on, that you want feedback on, or that you're confused about or struggling with, reach out, let us know, because there is a solid chance that we can get together on a, on a Thursday, just like this. And even go over inside of your account, the features that you're working on and things that you're trying to figure out and help you make sense of those things. So we are here for you during this period. Think of it, it's kind of like a mastermind session. I think that some of the most powerful learning moments that we've had in the course of this series so far have been when we've had other people come on and, and it's just light bulbs come off because you're seeing somebody else doing something and you get what they're kind of trying to do. And we help you make sense of it. And it's, it's like, instead of just helping one person, one-on-one, we've helped hundreds of people figure out how to do that one thing that they now know that they can do because they watched somebody get it done. So definitely reach out to us and be a part of creating that moment for yourself and for the community. All right. Goddess Tam, we certainly hope to have you here again and thank you for being here. All right. Well, if that's all of our questions, then we will wrap up and say goodbye until next week. Oh, here we go. Tina says, I just used the texting for the first time this week and sent out a team challenge to win a glass diffuser. I was able to add the image and everything looked great and it was easy. Awesome.
Awesome.
Awesome, awesome. All right. Well, keep sending us those stories and we will see you guys on the next one.
See you later. Thanks, everybody. Bye.